Okay, we're gonna get this workshop started here. So I welcome everybody to the Montclair City Council Workshop. I know that we have a heavy item to discuss and we've gotta get it done before the regular city council meetings start at 7:00 PM. So what we're gonna do is I want to have staff start the presentation. I know there might be some members of the public that want to comment. So we're gonna ask if you wish to comment, if you can either submit a blue card and give that to leave in this box over here if you want to comment. If you're in the audience, there's a blue card over here, just fill that out. And if you're on Zoom or on the phone, if you want to comment, just raise your hand or hit star nine on your phone if you wish to comment at that time. Because of the time constraints here, we typically have five minutes, but depending how people want to, how many people want to speak, I might have to reduce, reduce that down to less than five minutes. I will remind everybody, there is a city council meeting at 7:00, public comments, and if you want to speak at that time for your entitled five minutes, that may be another option. So with that, we're gonna get started and I'll have staff lead off. Go ahead, Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As you know, through Major L, the city has moved forward with the development of a infrastructure bond. We anticipate that the city will come in receipt of those monies effective on or about October the 27th in the amount of $45 million. We are a little bit disappointed that the premium generation was not as much as we had anticipated. We were projecting a premium of about $5 million, but it will actually come in probably closer to around two, two and a half million dollars. So the bond amount, the basic bond amount of $45 million does remain intact with the additional premium amount. We have approximately three years in which to spend the funds on various projects, which means that the projects that we have identified in the presentation this evening are, for the most part, hopefully, many of them will be shovel-ready to move forward as we continue to develop the other projects that will come online. We understand that there are, there is interest in the community for certainly issues such as school safety, and that is addressed in the various projects that are being proposed for your consideration this evening. Keep in mind that while this list is being presented to you this evening, it doesn't mean that it's ironclad. In fact, the total number of projects being proposed tonight is well in excess of, well, let me put it this way, as far as bond monies would relate to it, it's about $117 million. Obviously, we don't have $117 million in bond monies, so that number will have to be pared down considerably. In addition to that, there are a number of other projects that are identified that are related to other types of grants or other bond monies that are available through the redevelopment agencies, small amounts, but still money that we do intend to spend on those particular projects. So as we go through the presentation tonight, I just ask that you keep that into consideration. Obviously, the council members will have some input on how they want to move forward on prioritizing these projects. We cannot, again, spend $118 million in bond money because we don't have that, so some of these projects will simply have to be pared down, or we will have to look at postponing them into the future for other times. But with that, I will now allow Monica Haridi, our Public Works Director, to proceed with the presentation. I will probably be jumping in at certain points in time. One thing I want to point out to you is that as we go through the presentation, particularly as we get to the items related to the systemic street analysis report and Safe Routes to School project, I am pleased to report that Governor Brown, our Governor Newsom, did sign AB 43, which is a very important piece of legislation. What AB 43 will do for not only Montclair but every community in the state of California is that it will allow us to lower the speed limits after we conduct traffic surveys. As you know, right now, we are required by state law to comply with the 85th percentile, which means that for any survey that is conducted on a particular street, we have to use the 15% of those people who drive above what the recommended speed limit is. So for example, if the speed limit is 35 miles per hour when the survey is conducted and 15% of the drivers drive in excess of 42 miles per hour, we are required by law to raise the speed limit on that particular street to 40 miles per hour. It doesn't take into consideration traffic fatalities or the number of accidents that have occurred on a particular street, but rather what is the most comfortable speed for the drivers in that percentile group. That law has now been changed by signing AB 43, and the city council will have the prerogative of lowering the traffic speeds by five miles per hour. So this is very good news, particularly as we look forward to surveying our streets again and taking into consideration the numbers and results that we identified in the systemic street safety analysis report. By lowering the speed limit on a number of streets, that addresses major components of that analysis as it related to design and other issues. So we will certainly be coming back to the city council with recommendations to lowering the speed limits on a number of streets. However, we cannot do that any earlier than, I believe, July of 2024. So in the meantime, we'll be conducting the necessary traffic analysis to make that determination and come back to the city council. So with that, I hand it over to Monica.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. On September 4th, the city manager provided you with a list of projects to be funded with the 2021 lease revenue funds. Tonight, we will discuss these projects in detail and discuss a method to prioritize these projects. You should have a map showing the location of these projects we will be discussing tonight, this one here. This one gives you an overview of where all of the projects are located throughout the So I broke down the city into three regions for this presentation. The north area, shown here on this slide, is everything north of San Bernardino to the northern city limits. Central, the central area is, of course, I'll scroll down to the next slide, is between San Bernardino and Holt Avenue, and the southern part is everything south of Holt. I'll go back to this slide. In the northern part of the city, we've identified a total of about 46.1 million in capital improvement projects. As you can see, this does not include park improvements, which I will discuss as part of Slide number five. And, but I would like to point a few things in this slide. First, the total estimated cost in parentheses that you see after each project that is listed is rounded off, so it does not exactly match the numbers that you will see in the project ranking tables that I provided in further, or in Slides eight through 11. Second, I included the San Antonio Creek Trail as part of these improvements. We currently have a 201,000 grant funds for the feasibility study, and the construction of these, of the trail is substantial due to, due to the crossings under the I-10 freeway and the railroad tracks. So we would need to secure about $15 million in future grants to construct, to construct the northern part of the trail. The remainder amount is shown in the other segments of the city. Third, there are about 40 alleyways throughout the city. 16 of them are located in CDBG areas, so we will use CDBG funds, but we are currently analyzing those alleyways and will prioritize them, maybe in a similar way that I will be discussing as how we prioritize these projects. And I want to make a note that $3 million is probably not a lot, but again, we need to go through that analysis before we determine how much exactly do we need, similar to when we do a pavement management analysis and we try to prioritize the streets that need to be reconstructed. So in summary-
I just want to add there that while $3 million doesn't sound like a lot, basically, if you count it, it's about $200,000 per alleyway, and that probably gives us quite a few alleyways that we can address. In addition to that, the city receives Community Development Block grant monies that we can use for alleyway improvements, and that will be an additional component to this.
Yes, thank you. So in summary, out of the 46 million in projects, a total of 13.5 million in non-taxable redevelopment bonds can be used for these projects, and those are shown in, with an asterisk, I apologize, they're very small. And they include Arrow Highway and Fremont Avenue, so that means that approximately 17.6 million in lease revenue bonds can be used for the improvements shown in this slide. And the same thing goes for these, for striping, we're allocating about 450,000 citywide and we can allocate whatever is needed in these, in these areas. I'm just putting an approximate number there. So on the next slide, we have the center portion of the city, and there's a total of about 23 million of projects. Benson Avenue is one that we need to coordinate with the City of Ontario. The amount shown in this slide is half of what the total amount is, which is 2.2 million. The other is in the southern part, or the other half. The same with Mills Avenue. The total for Mills Avenue is 3 million, but I'm estimating two and a half million would be, or one and a half million will be used in the north side. We have Monavista Road Widening, number seven, so that's the portion that bottlenecks, and then just the remainder of Monavista, half of it is on the north side, the other side is in this region here.
Oh, just to elaborate on the Monavista Road Widening, that is primarily between Benito Street and San Bernardino Street. It's unlikely that that particular section will be occurring during the life of the bond monies, as far as the time to expend it, so this amount of money really will not be calculated into the total cost, so we would not consider this a priority at this point.
Correct. And when I go into the details of the methodology, you will see that that is one of the projects that is not scored high or in, it's not one of the top priorities. Same thing here, there's various alleyways, and again, until we go through our study and analyzing what it's going to take to make those improvements, those are just numbers there for now. Same with striping. And the other, so in summary, a total of about 11 million of these projects can be paid using the lease revenue bonds. The remainder, mostly for the San Antonio Creek Channel Trail improvements, is 13 million. In the southern part of the city, there's a total of about 41 million of projects to be invested in this area. The largest project is the Central Avenue Bridge, that's number 20 on your map, and that's estimated about 32 million. We have about 15 million in highway bridge program funds and, I believe, state funds as well, but you can see in this, in the summary table, we could use another 10 million in lease revenue bonds for the Zone 5 and 6 pavement rehab program, and those are the streets highlighted in green in Zones 5 and 6 of our pavement management plan. We also have a grant for the Ramona and Howard Roundabout. We actually received approval from Caltrans recently, and we'll, we're preparing an RFP for the design of that project. And that's pretty much it here. And then these are the, list of park improvements that was part of the list that the city manager sent to you. And basically, what we need to do first in order to address any of these improvements is to do a parks master plan, which I'm currently working on, and I hope to release an RFP in the near future. That will help us to determine what improvements are needed for each of the projects or parks, and whether they, they need to be redesigned or repurposed, or once we go through that, you know, and that will take time. So once we complete that analysis, we could use the remainder of the lease revenue funds to do some of these improvements. And again, we can go through a priority, some kind of prioritization for that.
I want to address, pull your attention to County Park, which is at the very bottom. County Park, obviously, is the piece of land that the city owns that is in the county of San Bernardino. We are not necessarily suggesting that we would be spending 4.5 million dollars on making park improvements at this time, we just want to bring your attention to this park. Our hope is that the Parks Master Plan will demonstrate that Saratoga Park can support additional facilities. If Saratoga Park cannot support additional facilities, and given the fact that two of our Little League parks are on school property, and recognizing that it is very difficult to deal with the schools as far as improvements to the parks because they are controlled by the State Architects Office, it can take years to implement improvements to those properties, and so part of this plan is to consider perhaps relocating some of those parks at these school properties to city-operated parks. And again, I hope that the master plan will demonstrate that Saratoga Park might be capable of supporting those additional parks. If not, the County Park may be an additional option that we consider down the road.
And I also just wanted to highlight the amount of grant funds that have been secured so far, a total of 7.2 million for the Saratoga Park and the Reader Ranch Park.
I did speak with Congresswoman Norma Torres's office today, and we should expect some time within the next few weeks as to whether or not that $2 million will be allocated to the city of Montclair.
Thank you for that clarification. So now we're going to discuss on this slide, other infrastructure. So for example, broadband infrastructure is something that can be paid using the American Rescue Plan Act funding or through other grants, or federal grants.
And I want to emphasize here that when it comes to broadband infrastructure, that is one of the primary infrastructure improvements that the American Rescue Plan Act approves, without having to go through the necessary rewriting of the regulations by the Treasury Department. So by looking at the law, this is clearly one area that the federal government wants us to proceed down with is broadband infrastructure improvement. So it is very likely that a good share of the American Rescue Plan funding will probably be recommended ultimately to the city council for that purpose.
Yes. And the majority of the improvements in this slide is, of course, the Safe Routes to School with over 25 million, and the local road safety program with about 28 million as a result of the recommendations in the systemic safety analysis report. As mentioned by the city manager, most of these improvements can be achieved as part of other road improvement projects, and again, this is something that we, we can also look at and prioritize independently or together, but our plan is to try to address these improvements as part of other projects.
And as I indicated at the beginning of my statement, or at this presentation, AB 43 will go to the heart of these particular programs. By reducing speed limits alone, we will make major impacts on the numbers of accidents, injuries, and fatalities throughout the community by implementing lower speed limits.
So as you can see, we have over 117 million of projects. I mean, if we were to spend the revenue funds in just two of these programs, such as the Safe Routes to School and Local Road Safety, we would be, we would be done, and my job would be very easy. But I love challenge, so anyhow, I'm going to move on to the methodology, which is, to me, probably the most important part of this presentation. And so what I created is, is a list of variables that impact each of these projects. So the variables are whether a project can be paid using American Rescue Plan funds or other types of grants, whether it can be paid with CDBG funds, is it a safety concern, is the project ready, are there conflicts with other projects in the city, and are there any utility conflicts, because sometimes that, those conflicts can take a long time? Or are there any environmental clearances required? A CEQA is probably faster and easier to do than an EIR or a mitigating negative declaration. Same with the right-of-way. Right-of-way can be an expensive process, so, and I will go through an example so you can understand how these, these points can affect the ranking of a project and, or why we rank them. They're subjective, so please feel to ask any questions as I go through some of these examples. And just to, like, for example, do American Rescue Plan funding, or let me go to the next slide and go through that process. So let me pick one. Let's pick, I don't know, since we're on that topic, the Safe Routes to School improvements. So can the Safe Routes to School improvements be paid with American Rescue funds? No. I don't think they are eligible. So the score would be, so if you go back to your table in, under methodology, if the, if it can be paid with American funds, the score would be low, because that means that, or, I'm sorry, if the, if the project cannot be paid with ARP funds, the score is high because that means these bond funds would have to pay for it, they're the only source to pay for it. So it has, so in this table, you could see that there is a lot of 10s for that reason. So if you go to the next column, which is other grants, Safe Routes to School, there are some area, there are some grants for Safe Routes to School, but recently, we applied for some funds, and those are very, very difficult to get. Again, then we wouldn't be able to use grants to pay for, for these improvements, therefore, the bond should pay for it. So it has a high score. Moving along to CDB, if it can be paid with CDBG funds. Yes, there are some areas in the Safe Routes to School program where CDBG funds can pay for this. So the score is low for that reason, or lower. Safety, of course, safety is number one, so that's, has a high score, it has a 10. And then, is it ready? Well, we have a plan, but we still need to design those projects, we still need to implement them or make them part of other projects, as we discussed previously. But it's still a high, a high number because they can easily be incorporated with other projects. Are there any utility conflicts? Probably not, since we're doing a lot of surface work, signs, striping, curbs, extensions, curb painting, so not, not, not too much conflict there. So, and other projects, yeah, there's probably, as I mentioned, other projects in the area. And then, does it require a CEQA or an NEPA? Those would typically be a non-exemption or an exempt project, so that scores high. So in this slide, you actually have the top 10 or 12 projects that I identify using this methodology. And I want to pause here to see if there's any questions trying to explain that method. Okay, we're good? And again, back to-
Ma'am, I didn't get your last name.
Haridi.
Haridi. Ms. Haridi, thank you. The methodology, might I understand that a 10, the lower the number, the-
The less of a safety concern. So for example, if you're looking at the, the first one up there on the slide number eight, the hen rail, I put a safety of five, because, yeah, we have some railings that are failing and they could possibly be a safety hazard, but they're not like the, like say, Safe Routes to School, which are, you know, safety matter, or the pavement rehab on Arrow, you know, it's, it's a one. The rest of them are ones because they're not, they're not safety matters or safety issues. They could be.
So is the low, the lower the number, the less the urgency, the higher the number, the greater the urgency?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's where I was confused.
Yes, yes. So, and then, so the higher the points, it's, sometimes it's kind of backwards.
That's, that's where I was-
Yeah, so that's why I paused to ask for any questions, because it can be confusing. And so, yes.
Thank you.
You got it. Any other questions on this slide? Okay, so I'll move on to the next one then. So these are the remainder of the 36 projects here, and again, I just wanted to point out what we discussed before as far as alleyways. $3 million, we could probably do a lot with $10 million, so I just wanted to highlight there that we do have about 40 alleyways, and again, 16 million of those can, or 16 of those can be paid using CDBG funds, but just like this revenue funds, there's only so much CDBG funds to do for, not just alleyways, but other, other improvements. And on this one, let's see if I have, yeah, I don't have anything here. Any questions on this slide, or any rankings? Okay, and moving on to number 10. On this one, I think the only one I wanted to point out again, as I mentioned earlier, for example, Benson Avenue, the total estimated cost is 2.2 million. On my map, it shows us 1.1 on the north side, 1.1 in the center. So my numbers may not be matching exactly, I just wanted to point that out so that, you know, and I, and I did send my final one, which corrected some of, some typos in numbers, but the scorings didn't change. So we're on our final slide here, and again, if you were to look at one, for example, Mills Avenue, you know, it's, it's number five on your map. Can we use American Rescue Plans to do that project? No, so these bonds would, lease revenue bonds would have to pay for it, so it has a score of 10. Are there other grants? No, they're not. And is it in a CDBG area? Yes, a portion of Mills Avenue is in a CDBG area. It's not a safety matter, it's not quite ready with, there's some, I'll go down the line, there's some right-of-way issues. It needs to be designed, but it could probably be done quicker, and there are no other projects in conflict with that project. There may be some utilities, actually, on this one, the score, the reason the score is a six is because we have Edison poles on the side that we need to obtain right-of-way, so that would take some coordination with Edison. And there's no NEPA or CEQA required, and the right-of-way is scored one, because that, again, could be an extensive project, so that's the total score for that project. So I went through each of these methodology, you know, one by one, and I assigned a number to each one, and that's how I came up with this ranking. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm open for any questions.
Well, thank you. What I'd like to do is ask council if you have any questions, no comments, let's just go questions first, and then we'll see how many members of the audience want to speak, and then we'll hold our comments after the audience speaks. Is that okay with everybody? So at this time, any members of council want to have any questions they want to ask? Any questions from the audience? No?
I did, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just a second, let me find my notes. Let's go back to Safe Routes to Schools. There's 25 million, I believe, that was potentially tallied up for allocations. I'm sorry?
Page eight.
Thank you.
It's on Slide eight, number eight.
Now, of course, we, as a council, earlier in the year, adopted the plan.
Correct.
And it is rather extensive and all-encompassing. I tried to go over it this weekend, and I still am a little bit boggled by all the contents and everything. What I want to know is, we obviously got to cut some of this, because we're limited with the allocations we have, or only have at most 49 million, I believe, is what we took out in, in lease bonds?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven? And you said at the very beginning, we had about 118, 117 projected on the list.
Just on projects that could potentially be funded by the- Just on projects that could potentially be funded by the infrastructure bond. There are other projects that take it well above that, but we would look at other funding sources.
Other sources, no, I get that, but we're limited to the 47 million based on the leasing What projects in the Safe Routes to School plan would take priority? And has staff already looked at certain aspects of the plan as to this one should be funded first? Or is there going to be a blanket approach to each different school site in the area? Look at intersections, crosswalks, what have you, signage, lighted signs, whatever, within this plan, and say, we're going to do a little bit at a time and level it out with respect to projects, or we're going to focus on the top three, top four, top five in the book? What is the city's strategy or staff's strategy, once these funds are allocated and we give our blessing to funding it? How is the, how is us as a city going to divvy up those funds to implement and actually enact some of these plans? That's what I'm, that's what I'm being asked by residents. I'm going to ask the question now.
All right, so if I may, both the Safe Routes to Schools and the systemic street safety analysis, there are some blending of issues here. So a number of the street improvement projects that are already part of what we are proposing will address a number of the fixes that are in both of those studies. A big part of the study actually suggests that signage that would be compliant with the MUTC, the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, could address a number of the issues related to improving traffic safety in and around the schools, as well as those areas that the systemic safety analysis identifies as having high numbers of traffic accident counts. And then, the third element is AB43, which will allow us to lower speed limits, which we could not do before. State law simply prohibited us from doing that. So if the city council can identify safety corridors under AB43, then you have the authority, simply by adoption of ordinance, to lower those speed limits, which will markedly improve, or rather, prevent traffic accidents, traffic fatalities, and traffic injuries along those corridors. You can designate up to 1/5 of the entire road structure in the city of Montclair as safety corridors and make those determinations. That's just identifying them as safety corridors. You can still lower the speed limits on other streets based on the traffic analysis, and then making a determination that you believe that the speed is still too high, and based on statistical information, it should be lowered. So that allows you that additional opportunity. So part of our project going forward will be do, effectively conduct traffic analysis on all of these streets that we believe would be subject to the need to lower the speed limits. And so by doing these multi-components, we believe that we will affect much of what is already identified in these two reports. These reports were in isolation. They weren't taking into consideration that the city was doing these other improvements to city streets. So they focused more on signage, as well as street design issues. And so by doing all of these other projects that we propose doing in combination with enhancing signage that we can do under the MUTCD, and lowering the speed limit, we believe that we will implement in an intentional way much of what these two reports are asking the city council to consider this evening. So we will probably be coming back with you with additional information to demonstrate how these improvements will be implemented through these other infrastructure improvements that the council would take into consideration and authorize this evening.
Okay, that said, one, before I forget the question, the new flexibility for us as a city to determine speed limits, is there a set criteria, a lower threshold and criteria given to us by the state? Or is it something that we can make findings on our own and determine what those parameters are?
AB43 has defined what the requirements are that must be met in order to do that, but it gives the city council considerable flexibility.
Okay, then that's great. Still, though, I see here a total estimated cost of 25.2 million for projects. The life of this bond is over 30 years.
I'm sorry, the what?
The life of the bond, after we finance and pay it all off, it's over 30-year period.
Well, you mean the projects, the life of the projects. The bond money has to be spent in three years.
Okay, yes, but we're going to be paying it off incrementally, of course, over the course of 30 years.
Yes.
Within the timeframe that we're given. My concern is the urgency of projects with respect to Safe Routes to Schools. At who's going to be determining which of those projects take priority or precedence over others? And how quickly can we get them implemented and acted, once council gives approval to this list? I wouldn't want them to be at the tail end of the allotted timeframe we're given, given the urgency. Well, I mean, there's some folks that have been waiting.
Let me interject here. I apologize. We did a study last year, I think it was completed a year before. Two studies, Safe Routes Screws, we did pedestrian and, let's say, motorist or traffic safety analysis. So you have a $25 million for Safe Route to Schools, and you have another 21 million for local road safety programs. These are huge numbers, no doubt about. That came from the study itself. I believe that what we need to do is, and I think we've, this council has talked about in the past, is that we need to start small, meaning we do small improvement projects to improve safety. One is signage, the other one is the flashing lights, for example. And identify where they're needed, based on the study, and those type of things can take place much early on. Major projects are more expensive, they're going to, you know, take more time, those will be more down the road. But I think the more simpler stuff, striping, another one, and of course, as we're doing the road improvements, the pavement improvements, this also will resolve some of the pedestrian and traffic safety as we go. So it's kind of, I think the number's too big. Kind of scares everybody. You're wondering, we don't have 25 million? Of course, some of this money, too, is going to come from grants and from outsides towards, is that necessarily from the revenue bond? So what I would like to see, and I know I'm, we're supposed to do comments afterwards, but I would like to see in advance that we can try to improve some of the pedestrian and pedestrian safety, especially close to schools here in Montclair, at a much earlier part, using striping, using signs, using the flashing lights, for example.
Mr. Mayor, you actually did hit on the point I was trying to make, and that is, and I'll read from page 134 of our Safe Routes to Schools plan, and I'm just using Vernon Middle School as an example. It says, install an intersection control beacon, install raised bowl bouts at southwest, southeast, northeast corners. Those types of things, although those are the micro-level details of the infrastructure projects, within this 25 million that is going to be allotted for Safe Routes to Schools, something like I just mentioned, I don't want it to get lost in the shuffle or in the prioritization. So that's what I was asking, is who's going to determine which of these projects takes priority, takes precedence? On a personal level, me speaking here as just one single councilman, based upon the concerns that we have seen from residents at the podium and expressed on social media since 2018, and most recently is last month and the months before, residents are still concerned about Vernon Middle School, and I would like to see that be a priority with respect to some of the safety additions there and enhancements to the school. And I think that would assuage some of our residents, put them at ease, and it would put other residents at ease as well.
And I have to defend this, because Vernon is only one school in Montclair. We have 11 schools, if I'm correct, 12 schools include the high school. And I can tell you, most of the schools have concerns by parents as well. So again, I think it's a high priority for us to do this. I think staff needs to go and do the research, bring it back to the council, and we, as a council, need to decide which ones we should start early with. But I know we're getting to, I don't know if you have more questions, Ben?
I do. I do have one more, and it is regarding the Montevista widening line item in the project. I, you put me a little bit at ease, Mr. City Manager, by stating that that is likely not going to be funded through this particular leasing bond. And I was, if it was going to be, I was, well, actually, I will, I'd like for it to be completely removed going forward from this ranking and list of projects going forward. Since it's likely not going to be part of the infrastructure package, we should just remove it.
Well, and in defense of that, you know, our traffic on Montevista Avenue is increasing, so somehow, we need to address it. If we're not going to widen that, then what do we do? Do we put better signage? Do we make changes? So I don't think we need to take it off the target zone. So I think it needs to stay there, but we need to resolve how we're going to do it.
Well, it's true, and I know my colleague to my right might disagree with me with this comment, but I live in that area. I hear the accidents. I think we do need to slow down speeds in that area. And with AB43 signing the law, perhaps we can address that. That said, my concern with this project is the issue of land acquisition and right-of-way. The 15 homes that are in question are on the west side of Montevista, where that acquisition has not been attained by the city. And based upon prior comments from the city manager's office, the east side has right-of-way access or acquisition granted to the city. The west side does not. Those residents, I wouldn't want them to be caught off guard and flat-footed if we give the blessing with this, even on a list, to proceed, them not having a say of yea or nay with respect to their properties, because no doubt they're going to be impacted. That's my only concern and hesitation with this.
Okay, thank you. All right, so do we have any speakers, Andrea?
Yes, we have three that I have in front of me. The first one is.
Do we have any speakers on Zoom or on the phone?
Yes. So I believe Eric Cuevas is on Zoom.
How many speakers we have altogether?
So we have three requests in front of me, and it looks like two more hands on Zoom are raised.
We have five speakers then? Okay, so what I'm going to do is, because of time, I want to limit the speaking to three minutes, and I'll let you go ahead and announce the individuals. Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Cuevas, you can go ahead and unmute.
Good evening to Honorable Mayor and members of the city council.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know that I am attending. Mr. Mayor, thank you for all the communication that you've had with me. I really appreciate it. Also to Councilman Lopez, I appreciate your comments as well in the previous council meeting of a few weeks ago. I'm just here, as you know, because of the alleyway in my neighborhood has been a topic for me. And so I'm hoping that everything works out in my neighborhood's favor. I understand the budget. I understand the amount of costs and all the determinations that need to be made when it comes to the city overall. But again, I'd like to request that the alleyway that serves my neighborhood be on the top of the list. And also, in addition to what was just brought up recently for Montevista and San Bernardino Street, I know you were just talking about it a few seconds ago. I would recommend improving the technology in that intersection. One of the reasons for high traffic in that area is because the timing is really bad with those traffic lights. If you can improve the timing, traffic flow, traffic flow will improve. I notice it, that there's a lot of stopping time when there's no traffic flowing in the opposite direction. And I believe that that's one of the main reasons for all the traffic accidents and heavy traffic. It also is connected to my alleyway. And so in some way, it also contributes to the problems we're having that come from that intersection. Again, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your attention, and I'll pass it over to whoever who's next. Thank you.
All right, next, we have Jose Perez.
Welcome, Mr. Perez.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Montclair, have been living in Montclair for approximately 13 years. I reside at 5506 San Bernardino Street in Montclair. I live across the street from Vernon Middle School, and I want to talk to you about the Safe Routes to School. My home is part of a Safe Route to School. There was a little kid, 11 years old, that was brutally ran over across the street from my house. He didn't have a chance to make it through those Safe Routes to School. As we speak, we have water gushing from the corner of the intersection, which is a hazard. We need to prioritize this as being one of the top ranks of the Safe Routes to School. This is him, approximately three years ago. The Safe Routes to School should be one of the top priorities. And I am aware of the surveys that need to be done to reduce the speed. It was approximately three years ago when it was done. I was aware of it. We know that the speed changes, and obviously, they are going to change. They had us locked down for 18 months. You bring out everybody out, obviously, the speed's going to increase. So we do know that there needs to be another survey conducted, and I am aware of the AB43. And I would like to see a time and a date that this construction or these changes for the intersections are going to, when would they be done? I want to read a little bit of a testimony that I had. They wrote, "This is a petition that I have over 300 signatures that were filled. Names, addresses, and signatures of all residents that live in Montclair that want changes done to that intersection. We need either speed bumps, beacons, stripings, yield signs, any possible thing that can reduce the speed. We should not see another life, another kid pass. The kids that go to this school are going to be our future residents of Montclair. So why don't we just do the right thing and prioritize this and put it on one of the top of our agendas on the actual, on the actual project?" It says, "Before the accident, the city repaved the streets and didn't replace the vibrating bumps 100 feet before the crossing. Forty years of those bumps there, one month, and they're gone. Christopher Wyatt, 5572 San Bernardino Street." And just like this, I have more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, here is members of the city council. My name is Roberto Rangel, member of Safety Routes to School, and to my left, Elizabeth Garcia, which we are involved in the Safety Routes to School. Well, you hit all my bullet points. You mentioned, you mentioned, first of all, our students are the future. Our students are going to be sitting where you guys are sitting in the future. And our priority is Vernon Middle School, of course, like you said, the little kid that got ran over was hurt all over. And traffic control in our school zones, for example, and when Avista Elementary School, being in the corner of Orchard and when Avista, which are pretty big streets. One of the main things is maybe putting speed bumps around our school zones, or crossing flashing streetlights, and flashing school signs before entering our school zones. You mentioned that earlier. Maybe solar lights, something to catch our attentions. For example, driving in our school zones, I watch myself sometimes in how fast I'm going, so I have to watch myself, for an example, for people to watch, right? Like I said, you did mention all the points that I wanted to say. So with that being said, the traffic control in our schools, we at Safety Routes to School are trying or are doing our jobs, entering our schools, and giving our points in their Zoom meetings, coffee with the principal, as we did with. coffee with the principal, as we did with when Avista Elementary School, and we're trying to catch up to other schools, and that is our main priority, to catch up to these parents and let them know, no double parking, not crossing in the middle of the streets. Even, we have spoken to crossguards, and they do risk their lives putting themselves in their job, you know, in crossing our kids, even the crossguard over at that corner in Orchard and Montevista. She has a pretty risky job in crossing our kids, you know? Our kids are the future, and with that being said, thank you for having me here.
Thank you.
God bless you, God bless you, God bless everyone, okay?
Thank you, God bless you too.
All right, Bruce Culp.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bruce.
Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, thank you, council. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, just wanted to reiterate my support for the SB 43, I think it is, and I think that's going to do well to make the entire city safe, not just select areas, but, you know, in North Montclair, I've already seen north of Arrow Highway, two high-speed traffic accidents, that one related in a death, another one, a serious accident. So, I'm hoping that Montevista becomes one of those safety corridors where we reduce speeds significantly. I know in North Montclair, you want to make that a walkable town, area, and to do that, you need to get the speeds down to 35 miles an hour across Montevista and Arrow Highway. I know a lot of people use that to get to and from work, but I would say signal synchronization will do that with lower speeds to help residents that live in this North Montclair area to have a walkable city. Right now, we have to dodge traffic and high-speed cars, people going to work, and puts us in an unsafe situation up north. So, I'm hoping that the, that those are becoming priority areas for slower speeds. Safe Routes to School is going to be a wonderful program, I hope you keep that a high priority, not just for Vernon Middle School, which is definitely needed there, but all the schools. I think, you know, we need to really prioritize our school areas and keep that. So, as you're hearing from the residents, it sounds like Safe Routes to School projects, and this SB 43 is going to really do much to help reduce the number of accidents, reduce the number of deaths, and those should be prioritized. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is Rose Delgado.
Hello there, are you able to hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, Mayor and city council, to everybody listening, I am simply here again to encourage you guys to make the Safe Routes to School a priority, and I know that everyone has said it, but I'm going to use my three minutes to reiterate myself. I know there's a lot of projects, as Monica said, that have obstacles. These intersections specifically by Vernon School and Buena Vista do not have obstacles as such, so I hope just to show your community that that's why we voted for you, and each city council member I have voted for, and I put my faith in you and my trust, and I know that you know that I'm a good person, and I'm not siding for this for any particular reason, not just my child. I was doing this before my child was there, and now that my child is there, she will leave one day, and I want to know that the schools in our city are protected. And every single day that I drop off my daughter at school, at Vernon, I see very, very unsafe drivers, and I really thank you guys for making this a priority in advance, and I have full faith in you guys, just know that. I pray that more teachers, more parents stand up for what is right, and that is a priority. I mean, I could deal with a lot of, I mean, you guys talked about, you know, fixing the roadways, that only makes drivers travel faster, believe it or not. I've been working with Jose, which spoke earlier, he has done a great job as a resident in working with the community to make it a safer place. I know that he did have to witness that horrible accident, and I just want to let anyone listening know that it was not that child's fault, he was in a crosswalk, whether his mom dropped him off, not in the yellow or not, or his grandfather, it doesn't matter. Our children are small, oftentimes, they do not have a voice to speak, and I will always stick up for the children around me, no matter what. So, I pray, I hope, and I have total faith in you guys, please, Monica, I've been in contact with you, I would love to speak with you again in upcoming meetings. It is not always easy for me to understand everything goes, that goes on. I know that Bruce is really smart with this stuff, so I will reach back out to him, but I pray for you guys to make this a priority and know that we are not doing this to be squeaky wheels for no reason. Every single day that I'm by Vernon School...
Your three minutes is up, thank you.
Am I allowed to say thank you, I have my mute? Okay, thank you very much for your time, and I pray for you guys to make the best decision possible.
Thank you. All right, anybody else speaking?
I think that's it.
Okay, so we'll bring this matter back to the city council, so... Did you submit a blue card? Did you submit a blue card, like we talked about earlier today? All right, come on up.
Could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Joseph Marvala, I am a resident of Montclair. I want to thank the city council and the mayor for having me here today. I, just really quick, I grew up here, born and raised in the city, and now I'm raising my son in the city. I would really like it to be a, on our priority list, to rehab our parks. I took my son to a couple of different local parks around the area, and they were very rundown. We shouldn't have to take our children to Claremont or Upland to enjoy our city parks here. I live in North Montclair, and there, I believe there are no real parks up there. There are two grass fields, Moreno Vista Park and, I don't even know the name of the other one on the corner of Montevista and Moreno, too, and neither of those have fields. I believe there's water fountain between the two of them, and no equipment or, so if there could be some type of look or some type of discussion or research into how to rehabilitate our parks and to hopefully add something in Northern Montclair so that the residents up there can enjoy our city and not have to go to their surrounding cities, because Montclair is a gem, and it would be awesome to be able to take my son to some of our parks, especially as places like the Mission Tiki, who knows what the future is there, Boomers closed down, so to have this recreation, this outlet, would be great. So, that's all I have to say, and I definitely want to say thank you for letting me have this time.
No problem, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Look, right now, it's 6:45, we have a couple of options here. We can continue this workshop after the city manager, the city attorney's going to have to help me out here, we can continue this workshop at the conclusion of the city council meeting today. So, we have our city council meeting, and then I guess we come back to workshop again as in German, that's, I think we can do that under the Brown Act. Or, we can come back at a different date and have the workshop. Is there an option by the council members, we want us to try and see where we're at at the end of the council meeting, see how much time we have left or how late it is?
My request to speak isn't working.
Go ahead.
If we can do something after the council meeting, that's fine. If we, this thing keeps flashing at me, if we can do something after the council meeting, that's fine. If we need to go to another date, that may be preferable because of some issues that are here. I will say this, the one gentleman who spoke talked about the traffic signalization. I've been talking about demand lights for three years or four years, and all I'm told is, well, we're tied to the county standard. If we are bent on reducing the speeds in this town, then we better do something about these very long reds and these very short greens that do not allow people to move through. That's part of the problem. We have a major shopping center, and we want to reduce the numbers of people going there? You can't have it both ways. I grew up on Televerdy Street, between Benson and Central. I know about traffic and speed. If we're going to reduce speeds in the city, then let's put in demand lights, the two go hand in hand, because the minute you reduce speed in one neighborhood, they speed up in another. And something else that we've noticed, or I've noticed, everybody wants the speed limits reduced in their neighborhood, but they don't want it reduced in another neighborhood. About five years ago, four years ago, we had a situation in town where some residents were complaining about too many people speeding through their neighborhood. We put extra patrols out, guess what, folks? About 84% of the citations issued were to people in that neighborhood. That's what happens most of the time. I agree, we need to reduce some speed limits, but let's do it while we're thinking clearly. Somebody mentioned about speed bumps, I don't know if that's possible on San Bernardino because that is a throughway for ambulances going to the hospital, and if you were crossing over from, say, Ontario into Montclair, because you're an ambulance taking somebody to the hospital, you'd have to go over those bumps. I don't know how that would work for a safety issue, but, you know, if we need to tonight, let's continue this after the council meeting, if there's time, or actually, I prefer just to another night where we have a lot more time. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank Ms. Heredia for a fabulous job and showing us what the priorities are and how things rank, and I'm sure that we will be able to focus on our schools as well as all of the other projects that impact our community. But, Mr. Mayor, to your question about whether we should continue this after the council meeting or to a different date, I think that, because you know, when the council meeting ends, there's still another committee that has to meet tonight.
Yeah, I know.
So, we, you know, we really don't want to be here till midnight, so maybe we can revisit this at a later date.
You're right, I forgot about another committee you and I are both on after this, so perhaps another date.
Okay, Mr. Lopez.
I would concur, let's not do this tonight, let's have another special meeting, or let this be part of another council.
So, we'll do this, and we'll direct staff to schedule a workshop on an on-city council meeting date, we'll start at 6:00 PM, maybe in two weeks, you know, contact all five of us and see what our schedules look like. Is that Mr. Starr? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest that we have a starting time of 7:00 PM, only so we can give the public an opportunity to come? I know this was a 5:45 meeting, a lot of folks that may have wanted to come tonight couldn't because of picking up kids from school, dinner, traffic, whatnot. I think 7 o'clock might be a little bit more accommodating for those that wish to speak and give their input on a whole variety of issues. That would be my preference, but I'm one of five.
We typically have workshops at 6:00 PM, I think everybody's comfortable at 6:00 PM, I think members of the audience can be here, but I also encourage a member of the audience, either here or on Zoom or watching this on a video on a different date, you can write us emails, letters to the city clerk's office, if you have an opinion. I know it's hard to get all oral comments done in a short period of time, but I would encourage anybody to also submit emails, letters to us, and send them all to the city clerk's office, or you want to send me an email directly, and I'll make sure all five council members, or I'll get to the city clerk's office, and she'll give them to all the council members as well. So, with that, the city manager will get back to us on a date and time to continue this workshop. Thank you.